If we can't see our down in the application. Do is either have or opposing the okay. Get sworn in and then we'll get your as you come forward your comments.
Do you tell me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the.
And we'll.
To me from area that my name, I have lived at Granville. A lot of youth from where I was in that we had. I was a my kid off in the day. I hear from the know that they say our community, I things and I hear we're community. I like to and you don't have to live in that area. If you do, now the question is pulling in and out of that area. So I adding another corner is more than we are and add things that to be changes. And they a lot of people there's you know two, but immediately into a community, you lowering the property values. And actually, I moved from Blakemore to that area, but I not state license, storage building, you're not going to take down the property value. The appearance and I would heavy duty, I don't know if any would would get to that. And Mr. Right, Mr. Roland be there and like out of all those worst case scenario. I understand it's commercially be built there, be a community that would increase the value of the home, have more and be a whoever taking it down. I mean, you know, into that. That folks that are, you know, they evidently doesn't live right there close by, you know, in another area or avenue, they're this, not then and then leave the proceeds. But I appreciate that we that we can corner, community, not in property evaluation and hack and road. And I'm sure I've been on that word to let alone if they're business right there, the way that that would have to come in and things that would have to be. Thank you.
Fifty-one oh nine Villa Place Drive, La Grange County. Apartment that is apartment. Wanted to make sure that my testimony here is purely as it felt like that was. Under the strict requirement, I think we're looking for zoning. Point Road through that track that was track. So that other little probably too small or set. That being when you come in on Cetera over the years, everything is residential. We have a new thought it there and they want to build back off. Some people might agree, I think it's a community because use. From typically one bearing, I don't know how you all feel about it. Need to make this work. I just maintain what I think we vary. I don't I see. When I started looking at three percent, percent, three percent of variances that grant book, those aren't we just do away with okay. And I will do that. And this this talked about pretty well. Backs confused about what's unfortunate about it is what's unfortunate about. Don't really get that standpoint of I don't think so. Solid fencing breaks, you know, you cover thing however you want to. Mini storage. On a little bit further. But one of the and what does approval from per con regulation. So it's unreasonably the regulation. Need to comment on there was on zone that I think I think for you have to. There are certain things one lots of others that are that we all we allow them and off. But in residence, storage and self storage only and I want to permit in other zones. And I want to we wanted to with up close or residential. That's for now. Now others I've lived years, they've there for a long as an L or office space for expected that was what was going to eventually happen. That's why we that's why we hate districts because those are to be very compatible and those do wise compatible.
I don't want to speed you up, but.
Basically said what I need.
Good morning. K I E. Thank you. Grand four years. Information is, but it doesn't cover the pictures that you took there driving on eighteen. You can or you can turn left six. You are far by the mark back. Close to the road anything, so you have to pull up. But when you turn left there right now, other seventeen, you can't pull up then turn. So if you're there times or anytime see a very you're not going to see anything when you seven. That's why it got to be set. Can't see the tree. That should be ten feet to the right so that you can see you can't current that are you there.
All right.
Villa Drive.
Sir.
R T H A C K E R. Covered the biggest of them out. We spoke to find old stuff out and go into the. When it started with the back lines, why build the that's the one we're going to put trees there. One they got the parkway out there and it's like garbage. You go up there and see these and the point road of a morning, they're putting up a street light and they've been up the some years. They used to have still got the same problem, but you can't talk about making them take all the road to see. They say with the land change the setback. Okay, when you see link fits dead, you can't see out of it. You're taking your life in your hands because sex coming would, but he makes that last one if the arbiters are doing forty-five or that's that street. Don't think we need it there.
Durbin, eight six Villa Drive in the house. Morning, my name is Kevin Durbin. I'm the for you of thoughts residents are. I haven't had since I read session also again, I my concern, the nose project that the developed will bear to happen as we saw the best, but actually in the best what we believe is that the older county residency would. It takes are really around lights or lighting spoken to or runoff and there are heard that safe Lydia point road onto one forty has been mentioned in residence. Proximity, described to and the effect property value Cedar Point so far and residences. One of the is a various project advantages per convent, the spirit of first place turning on to that the variances. Another point out, the applicator get undue hard done to read that including anybody know that hard issue compliance with these regulations and cuz of unique topic, other natural or may have entered on the particular land is not why we're variance, why we're because of the property. I don't think there's issue land itself backs. We would for shenect was rightly recommend of the project as proposed as that I stated. Deserved for especially our village, everybody and the two texture here. I want to for your time, Grand Villa, spend a it's always and to have a chat. Thank you for your and as that's very much.
Thanks, sir. A couple of the folks.
I reside at Drive in I've been five years. I have basically been just coming out of the picture so there for picture the way they sign there where you all out marked to see that you have head and cross one or the other is the base of it. But if you look at view, the media heard anything about it, not next speaker present. I'd be interested to hear with the comments to have how to this, knowing that they're going back wall in that area. It's not an area of apartment building. We have areas in this for these sort of facilities. Just request there. Thank you all very much for your time. I appreciate it.
All right. Down. So, you know, if anybody else to add or this point.
The question if and that's my ask when restrict like.
Address it if they want to to you.
Pretty different of company dealing with here, construction company applicant and which is the owner of property. Same. Property exactly why we have the commission down for us. When you're talking the need for the normal of the setback is only not true and a norm for real thing. They have the favor because these are nuances for industrial property and.
Question or whatever on there's time to have an you know rebuttal.
Current these same restriction.
Any testimony and.
When Winston Grand I used to be on board. Have caught more hell in garage and we've had people up to visit. I've been called all kind of names, but the papers say this, this is no doubt. It's a the cabin take that's automated and let's say that the thing with the personnel stand that's right. And then you go down when the school out or if you're going to the grid interstate, that's how bad. And you it's it's a whole lot you got.
Thanks, sir. All into and those opposed by the commission. Do you have or?
Question stated that you are options on this property with intent for the protections.
To center on the.
Pardon?
Commercial strip and the corner bank or the up behind McDonald's. And the after we filled that downturn and the tough. So we we just so I had come up on it. Us a division to the we had no one here vision of the project with the wall property being means structure at the houses built in the project is look as usual as we can. Pretty blue around the kind of like between the one story building and then over here between the bricks which turns away from the all that. So into the architectural to build create a problem for you, Grand Villa. Turning toward I developed on the right. The equation, the property line and be ample to build the building, put in trees and still be able to two or three cars look now you turn or anyone.
Ever change in there to stay on.
That town zone and there's sure. Like I say, we'd be less. Right now it's just kill. Be killed by AM just hard to get anybody to buy. Things that we hear from calling for same thing with all this or back home, just going back in our home, getting real. So we're what we came up with. I think it's my fault in this project, other project across the nation, very well done. Planning of the other area. First areas now make their finger at and there's a definite need for area. There are self storage area on the face.
Okay. Or Mr. Douglas.
Thirty-four foot right away on one to the fifty foot right plan shows away.
The there's a reserved area, future right away dedication.
I have authorization for fifty foot right on a plan. The D that's what you've got right away center line.
With a total right.
Highway one foot right away.
Douglas, you're talking about speaking of, I think that that's the my quartered foot. Though I don't know what he changed.
And was do we have surprising that change. It was rather off of one to Cedar Point Road and. I mean, it's on. Right there.
If you could.
There's already an sixty foot right away because the development proposing additional right away sixty foot right away.
Here right away dedicate puts from center.
That's additional. That's an additional fifty feet. Says at the bottom of the pathway fifty foot right.
Six.
They're dedicating in a date because you know one right there dedicated on top of the sixty foot.
So they're not there. So what's in a.
He's got fifty feet to be.
He's just not thirty of that already.
Right. And if my question then will be that's in twenty. Your asset setback from the. Six. What then? It clay, we're giving you a variance for those.
At least used way dedicated have presented they came up with the thirty. The art right away occurring be an issue and be anyway dedication could not occur to do six.
Okay. My next question to you, Mr. said somebody proposed detention basin area. Do you have.
Could like it in that. Initial does and been in the plan engineer, I'm a plant. And then a submission occurred between and or about the details of the so cited agree to the ID tension and at this day, if approved, or else this would be conducted to determine.
Do you presume to assume where the outflow of those. I mean, they're I don't going to.
Goes to the existing stream and the.
Light flow from really it all it all flows towards we conceptual detention subdivision here within a dedicated recording. And then capture all of our capture parking lot, the construction line to our detention, hold it same or lesser rate than it is.
Size of drainage easement.
Here that I'm looking.
But adjacent. Those develop to stream. Gully and.
Capture it all into the. Right. Well, and the plan is to all of the drainage leave the parking lot and then this. So plan all end up in our and then construction plan with the help of office.
You know, not been.
It won't take an effect of a resident. Question with the would have been any charge in its basin, what have capture of that illicit discharge.
You mean discharge.
Runoff, all run off things that may goes into the drains.
Engineer requirement.
Don't know if there.
There's no outage. Name of someone pulling as if they were in their driveway.
Right. In the presentation, the county engineer know that the applicant meet and run off too much. Right. Anything like that, but that's why we're going clean water. Attention ways to. I don't know. Yeah, it hasn't been enough grading. We kind of was now.
For you, the applicant.
Get accused of chair.
Okay.
For me.
What is many feel usual and what's unusual to me? I'm to know.
I remember it would be application for very I have to look back and.
Or anything, but I didn't history.
I would say on the high end. Okay. All right.
Mr. Hill. I thought you I might, but did you show what it would look like? No. I have variants.
Enough early. After in the one building setback seventy-five foot setback. Bumper areas, attached areas is what that regardless of restaurant. Sorry, sure. It's earlier of the year and has or what's proposed relief type of development.
Did you?
Yes. Note off, this site was not required to meet point direct. If your property physically. Your point villas, I think it's called. half discussion September, a lot of good concern, but I think and I don't know if any of them are here with them, but I think if.
Your plan, plant meeting.
Plan, the plan, we move the rear. This bill moved in this direction about twenty feet some portion. Staff requested that we try to do that. That are proposed for we just materials after hearing that.
In the packet, the decent would be on site.
Yes. The other detain through county engineers office. Our drainage, the initial put in on came up with the idea and what put on site, accomplish everything required, meaning the existing basin point suburb. So really at the date on the plan, analysis to one of those.
Questions we got about our time.
Should be if anyone is here from the development. Is that that thing to say?
Well, they did.
If he wanted to.
Kind of pass that opportunity to.
No, we did.
Backwards and then.
You tell me no. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
About the concerns that were raised by folks relating site distance, several people there were really poor, impeded the right is don't know I did, but is the case who goes into to go to and say signs and they interfere with if they're too close to ever.
Permits where we have the site locations and they were so they're out of the permit in.
Where we were, they did apply but hearing those.
Back there and I, okay, we.
Can call or we can send our code and force that they replace permit.
Solution of that. Okay. What to do.
Have to have a.
Okay. There were. To lower.
I mean, you're you're not testifying to that.
No, okay.
There's any. No document or I mean, we hear they lower on this, but there's not a whole that we're this prior to totally going in or power going post property value. Any testimony on not that you're expert.
Who did not.
Probably have something later.
All right. Zoning, is there a purpose or a for normally a state.
Actually recommended adding the setback real zone. I weren't. The of the type of that would be and the have on the joining property.
Yep, I will question. I were a planner.
Starting we're down to.
Your eyes of the fence road. Through there, turn, go all the way the back turn where the storage far in cars.
I'm sorry, make sure I question if semi.
Yeah, with storage units. They can't turn your.
Between.
Feet on unit semi is that.
I don't know how much.
It's a storage unit.
Large semi.
Perkins come up to them.
Or small trailers and cars or trucks. If they get somewhere, we're moving in town by, they would load whatever they're going to put in or put in time and bring. That lighter, they're lighter than than normal. And I think we have, you can want to impede into the side up, think we can get it to turn around for the moving.
So that's what I would think something in large to.
Center of there will be stop gate to not come in driver, any no.
Sir.
Elimination of nineteen basin each have eleven. It's with well, no. Eleven people.
Again, other facility, there are over two or three. Be twenty people in there. Time when they come in, they they don't even come in to their garage. Then they bound and back out there. Tension is a lot that I know about that. Parking on site. That'll take up spaces, you know, pull it. Just to have, you know, no idea what's going to happen to the facility than the one I talked.
You're our. Do we deserve or are we. Do we, is there, are we ready? You know, everybody or whatever. Additional question? Any questions?
Two, where your property. One cut it by two, that's that point at that is a hundred. Very. Two of your. Three of your variances. It's a budding, this was on your variances.
On the back here. Seventy five to twenty five.
Okay. So now to. And cross invite.
One more thing.
Okay.
That we're, we're twenty five foot. Heavy before you get to their house, so their speed. Puts right up together.
Okay. To cross examination.
Mr. Chairman of.
Final statement.
Right. Save my time.
Let me move on into the opposition. Examine this time. Only a patient. A well.
Somebody. With water in a subdivision, right?
That we had a testimony that is seminary, county engineer.
And that, there are many buildings and much. Is gonna run, the only place they can really. Road runs. We have, with that ditch filled up with water running across. Live in the back. Maybe some years ago. Part another heavy, we used to run down through. They up, four up and up, down in. Now, if we get, they're gonna get a whole lot of water, so how much is your, food or street when it rains? Cause the water in that basin ain't gonna sprint. So we gotta cut water, cause only place is like, and go down the road there, about that.
Okay. Is there any additions?
Auto lock and.
Uh, oh, not really. If you, if you wanted to.
In fact, quick statement. With applicants, this property. Two thousand, I think it was. I must have heard that clearly as well.
Sir.
Thank you. Statement from. Working, I don't know.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Uh, bringing up. Our chances real.
It was set.
Setbacks.
Setbacks.
Um, K hundred. Talks about finding necessary findings. Part of that, or alter the structure of vicinity, allow an unconventional of the requirements. Just of what we.
You want. And here we.
Guy.
Hold on a second.
Tell the truth, the whole truth and.
I need your name and address for the.
Felix.
Your last name, please.
R A M R.
Okay.
And, uh, but he. Being as if. When I've only, it'll be two years in April. I don't know. There was not.
Okay. Do statement of the. Statement.
Just want to just close on three main statements. Yes, speculative. I don't. Help me to respond. Be developed. Self storage, mini warehouse is permitted. And then we get the backs. There's the option changes. I. As for that variant, I think without a doubt, yes, definitely. Thank you.
Would like to add to, yes, ma'am.
Question about the. How good, I think exception, the things that you different with Realtor. That it's the perception that sometimes it's made different, reseller, it's being there, so. Uh, just their perception, take the home item, but it may be different. Other homes, so they're on that.
All right. And the final statement here on.
In the title, hearing the members of the commission that. And visibly well, because we do have to spur as far as a member. We deal with the best of the property, and I know there obviously that. Present. Which are common with restaurants, banks. Have that, you odor, have the, you don't. With. As fun as I. Uh, act need to you probably able to pretty. And need variance, they may not be. By your heat, we provision that is very real. Use identical zoning in. County relating does have. Facilities this proposed are. Needed. On the. This proposal for this community, if you. To be to facility, food, to the rest, to the. Is a good. On the. Cedar. In water, pretty is still yet to be done, I think, because you are. Then you do it, and if it doesn't. And we have to the county, all that work is yet to be done, and I understand it's, it would be as well. Mr. McWilliams, I think of you as entering. Remember the main, and letting the people know this truck. And. That I've been to. Around, so we will address lease. Thank for your vote of applause, I think you have a comment.
I just want to read here, you know, start. We do both county and in Oldham County. We, they storage had low impact. Be whole entire site. For routine said, and that engineering fact, if good looking facility currently. Load, it's. We tried to work with the county. One forty six by way that we have a, I think the community have your. We don't get your vote, the maybe do the down. The parcel out, zoning, the. Curved out, parcel, divided the. And it was divided to create the residential parcel. We knew this audit, and it was common, so we thought for a commercial. Previously, what it is and so forth.
Thank you. Uh, with, uh, PZ two four is now. I'll call you outline a little normally the development plan or lack, so we have to do the variant first, we have five variant requests. Five. Will do the first, Alvey, asked it on the, go through and vote on those separately, I'll pass and then.
For a front yard area of the property along highway, the required seven hundred feet is thirty, the variance being. Item four feet, and again, varying for the back along highway.
Okay, or anything you need?
Other than. You may consider.
And stated by when the to either approve or deny whether it's public health or welfare of the general. Well, a hazard or a. That are considered in a circumvention. There's an actual motion to approve or.
All right, you have heard here on PZ zero two four, and stated earlier, we've added a time variant required foot and. Or variance of four feet, entertain a motion on the first.
A motion to deny the variant. Percentage.
Mrs. Is that an adequate?
Item deal, of the requirements of the zoning regulation.
Right.
Can you agree with that?
Yes, I do.
So that would be your. For feet, which were the variance required for.
Yes, sir.
Okay. What we. Okay, do we, okay, got. Discussion now, the five variant. Then. One now, is there any discussion on variance required, sir?
Chairman, I'm gonna be applaud of these, before we make. One way or the other, there's vote, look at the. Two. Is much larger than this particular, I would say. That make a difference is is. Palatable. Property, they may indeed be. Their property, not really comparing, I'm not aware of the, eyes of track, the normal I two. Reasonable that the. Billable and 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 well created area hazard and new.
Would it be a pro follow up? Waivers and variance or taking.
Can, you know, discuss. Technically, considering the one right now.
If we're.
Okay.
Regulations, and we've dealt with. And various and. Therefore. Court. Just. Up. Now to state.
The understanding that people can't apply. Had to go through.
You have a board of justice.
Well, with due process. Being that. Or the instance that wants to come.
About the variant.
Yes, as if. Fit the. The proposal, so I'm. Thinking about what did he.
Question on the.
In how switches the variance we're looking at, quite four feet. Obviously, the aware of the situation they were facing with the I two with. Seventy five. But I, my, my concern was. We didn't hear any. Applicant be willing to. Storage units setbacks. Storage units have less. Or any confided. Maybe vest. I just. Could they have done away with the units?
Ms. Bonet.
Mr. McWilliams, also. They are singular zoning, certainly with twenty twenty when values to. Large appropriate zone, when we decided or the change left that sliver. Utilize access standard that property will to. Now properly. And I feel this extreme, something circumventing the purpose of the regulation in the first.
Further to deny the request. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
She had, she had not yet, Ms. Davis.
When. Read them, and you can under the. The property uses beside what they say, and so. Is not. We.
McQuaid.
Are you correct to prove this?
Correct. Not be, any of these, the various waivers are. So, correct.
Uh, just be realistic. Some of them is for either proving what the. Reality, you've got five maybe to deny, first, it's true, to deny, theoretically, testimony has been to the project. Just a case of the, of the current, because. And they've said they can't do this.
Complete your statement, Mr. Colm. Uh, yes, sir.
Question was to have a vote.
Okay, all right, let me hear that we.
Uh, I certainly not take. Prevent them, were, were we first variance, the applicant from coming back to us, a vacation of. Clearly variant and variant.
Have the option several different, you know.
Correct, they can, they can renew set of variances with a revised plan and come back before.
Okay. Think you had discussion, I think now, oh, the point number one, the. Six feet for four feet. That is a motion to deny that particular, you would, is a motion to deny.
Yeah, yes.
To deny, thank you, yeah.
Affleck.
Yeah.
Fair Finney. Smith.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Mesker. Horton. Bonet. Ms. Davis. Mr. Douglas.
On variant, variant four feet, that I, my vote, oh, that F outline and. Bernie will note the other request, so at this point, today, first variant, first. We adjourn for today, docket. Zero two four today. All right. Things, excuse me, no.
Remy. Update, update the history and new relation. Point five hours.
We get a. Okay, approving the. Training. Stratus A. Point five.
Uh, regarding date, have, be sure to mark that on your calendar, December the eighteenth at nine AM, our line is. Certain, we may have. I'll email you out on Thursday, or not, we will have a meeting on the thirteenth, a shorter meeting of fiscal court, not go. As a full note.
Don't talk to y'all. Way closer. Okay. Okay.